Good evening. Welcome to the... Oh, City Street. Thank you. June 26th meeting of the Quincy Planning Board. I'll just read some opening comments and... Oh, you know what? I'll do the... Take the roll call first. Sorry.
All right.
Excuse me.
Roll call.
Ally Shaw is here.
John Kelly present.
Larry Duzel present.
Kim Bealim present.
Mr. Bean present.
PJ Follin present.
Okay, great. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. The board requests that you please be courteous to the proceedings and turn off your cellphone. The planning board reserves the right to administer oaths through the chair, summon witnesses, call for the production of papers, cross-examine a person giving testimony, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject site or buildings during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing for cause. The order of business will be as announced by the chair. All questions should be directed through the chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition. Once recognized, please stand, state your name and address, specific interests in the proceedings, and special credentials, if any pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. The hearing is being stenographed and taped for the public record. The planning board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. So the first item on our agenda is to vote on the minutes of the April 17th meeting. Does anybody have a chance for a view? Okay, sir.
Motion to approve.
Okay, sir.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then vote on the minutes of the May 15th Planning Board meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is actually going to be the continued public hearing on 10 Independence Avenue as Planning Board case number 2024-01. Attorney, please.
That was withdrawn.
Are you representing that?
We need an added chair. An email was sent over to the board that... That was withdrawn.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So if anybody's here for 10 Independence Avenue, the application's been withdrawn.
Do we need to do...
We need to...
Accepting the withdrawal?
Without objections?
Yeah.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'd like to move to withdraw when it comes to 2024-01 to be withdrawn without objections.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on the agenda is 2426 Branch Avenue, Planning Board case number 2024-04.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. This is a continued hearings. However, we've really responded to all the outstanding peer review comments, the city's DPW comments, and I believe that this matter is prepared for conclusion. We're certainly here to answer any questions the board may have. Mr. Donahue is here with me tonight as well. We did, we did actually... I'm sorry, Madam Chair. We did submit just this morning, as I see you looking at plans that actually modified the sidewalk in the front of the building. And that was a request of the DPW that the sidewalk be improved with a cement sidewalk and granite curbing. And that site plan was modified to show that.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Any questions? And this is a public hearing. Is anybody here to speak on this application for 24-26 Branch Street? That's bicycle path. So is there a motion to close this public hearing?
Close the hearing.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And does the department have a recommendation?
Yes. As Attorney Fleming noted, the department did receive an updated site plan that shows the constructed sidewalks in the proper context. Speaking to Attorney Fleming, he will ensure that the final plan sets that are processing if the board chooses to vote in affirmative will be updated with that detail. So we're satisfied with that. And with that, would be prepared to provide a recommendation. After consideration of the site plan, accompanying documents, and the comments received from the city staff and peer review consultant, the department recommends the board approve site plan review under Quincy zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, Site Plan Review, and Special Permit under Sections 5.1.17, Parking Waiver, subject to the below-listed special and general conditions. Condition number one, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances and, if applicable, special permits from the City of Quincy Zoning Board of Appeal. Two, the applicant shall reconstruct the sidewalk for the entire property frontage along Branch Street with a cement concrete sidewalk pruned finished with border and tool joints and granite curb as specified by the Department of Public Works. Three, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or its designated representative to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Four, the existing pipes and manholes on Branch Street shall be inspected with television pre and post development in order to check the condition of the system. The television report and video clips shall be submitted to the city engineer for assessment. Five, the proponent shall notify the city engineering office for purposes of inspecting the construction of the stormwater management system at the following times: upon completion of excavation, upon completion of chamber and crushstone installation and prior to backfill. And the applicant shall provide at least 72 hours' notice of said inspections. Six, the entire proposed stormwater and sewer system shall be cleaned and flushed prior to its final acceptance. Seven, the applicant shall perform a water flow test with the city's water department. The test shall be submitted to Department of Public Works prior to any piping work. Eight, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall submit a long-term operation and maintenance plan for the project's stormwater system, which shall include the following: stormwater management system owners, the party or parties responsible for the operation and maintenance, including how future property owners will be notified of the presence of stormwater management system, and the requirement for proper operation and maintenance. The routine and non-routine maintenance tasks to be undertaken after construction is complete and scheduled for implementing those tasks, snow storage areas and the locations of all stormwater BMPs in each treatment train, along with discharge points, and identify any limitations on the use of salt and deicing chemicals. Excuse me. An estimated operation and maintenance budget, inspection and maintenance of Catch Basin, inspection and maintenance of Catch Basin and Manhole. Inspections shall be conducted by qualified professionals such as a civil engineer or environmental scientist. Records of inspections and maintenance shall be up to date and available for review and inspection. The maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Nine, the applicant shall consult with the Quincy Health Department on noise mitigation measures for project-related noise generating activities to comply with local and state regulations. Ten, the applicant shall submit a written rodent control plan to the Health Department for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said plan must be designed for the duration of the project and included minimum the following: naming contact information of a licensed pest control operator to be retained by the project proponent for the duration of the project; scope of the proposed plan for control of rodents, including number, location, and frequency of monitoring bait stations and anticipated length of service; and C, summary of actions to be taken to prevent rodent problems at the construction site. Special condition 11, the applicant shall develop and submit a written dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to assure compliance with state air quality regulations. Twelve, the applicant shall comply with the City of Quincy treaty ordinance. Thirteen, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to be filed and approved prior to the issuance of the building permit. This shall include the locations of stockpile and door staging areas for construction equipment and materials. The applicant shall also address construction period traffic impacts by providing a detailed sequence of construction and addressing any space constraints and detailing how they will be addressed as construction progresses. Fourteen, the applicant shall install survey monuments to delineate the property line. On the public right-of-way, the monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Fifteen, the applicant shall submit AutoCAD file for the project prior to the issuance of the building permit. Files should be in Mass State Plane Coordinate System and preferably in Quincy standard data layers. Sixteen, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall submit a report including certified ASBIL plan from a professional engineer or surveyor certifying that the stormwater management system has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans. The report should include a certification that the excavations of the proposed system were inspected prior to backfilling. The applicant shall also provide to the city engineer the digital file ASBIL plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site, facilities, and rights of way along with an AutoCAD file. The ASBIL plans shall be in Mass State Plane Coordinate System. Plans should be stamped and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. And seventeen, upon completion of the project, submit a stamped affidavit from a registered professional engineer that all the utilities, water, sewer, and drain are constructed as designed and no illicit connections are found on the completed project site. That would conclude the department's recommendation.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to approve consistent with the department's recommendation?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Great.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing 20 Whitney Road, Planning Board case number 2024-05. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of Wild Family Investments, 174 George Russell Street, Boston, Mass; 02127 for site plan review under Quincy's zoning ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1, Site Plan Review, and Special Permit under Section 5.1.17, Parking Waiver. The applicant proposes to convert the existing office building to seven residential units with surface and internal parking for a total of nine spaces. The proposal will also include professionally-designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property contains 8,639 square feet of land and is located at 20 Whitney Road. The subject property is located within a business C zoning district and shown on a surface map. 1126 Lot 4, Plot 2.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley. Business address 265 Willard Street. I'm joined here tonight by Brian Donahue, who's our architect, and Jim DeSalle, who's our engineer on the project. The proposal we are here to discuss tonight is 20 Whitney Road, which is located in the business C zoning district. As you can see right here, that is Whitney Road, right off of Hancock Street, right outside of Quincy Center. It's a mix of single and multifamily homes. As you can tell right here by all the homes on the street, they have a similar design and feel to them from the structure, the lot size, and the roofs as well. This is also a very unique street because right when you come off of Hancock Street and turn out to Whitney Road by the Sullivan Tire, that's actually a business zoning district. And as you go further on down the street, it eventually turns into a residential zoning district. So there's two zoning districts that are in play on the street. Right here, that is 20 Whitney Road. That is how it is currently situated right now. This is the first building that you see when you turn out to Whitney Road right off of Hancock Street. If you look at it right now, and if you didn't know any better, you would immediately assume that this is just another residential home on the street, either a single or multifamily home. In fact, it was, a number of years ago, a home. But currently, right now, what's going on inside of this building is you actually have nine offices. You have a basement with storage in there. You have a kitchen. You have a meeting. You have a conference room. And you also have a waiting area as well for potential clients. What the applicant is seeking to do here tonight on this 8,640-square-foot lot is convert that existing space on the inside to seven studio-in-one-bedroom apartments between 500 and 1,000 square feet with nine parking spots. Back at this... I just want to go into a little history here. Back at this building's height, pre-COVID, you had nine offices, which were basically sole practitioner, practitioner professionals, either architects, engineers, lawyers, accountants, that all had offices in there. Many of them had staff members under the secretary or associate. And also, over the course of the day, you had a number of clients coming in and out of this building, you know, for meetings and whatnot. So what we're proposing to do here tonight with the nine... With the seven apartments and the nine parking spots is actually a lot less traffic and a lot less cars that will be coming through on a daily basis. But post-COVID, the demand for these type of offices has actually decreased. And as this has decreased, the need for housing has actually increased right now, as you see by the lack of inventory between apartments and for sale units as well. There was actually a similar project down the street, a little bit on Hancock Street. It was a little bit different where it was actually a mixed studio apartments as well as with underutilized commercial office space. And they were able to convert that underutilized commercial space over to additional studio apartments as well. Just want to reiterate right here. This is the view from the corner of the lot on 20 Whitney Road. You are a 40- to 50-yard dash away from being right on Hancock Street, crossing the street and going right over to the Quincy Center train station. And I know I don't need to go in great detail with this board between you and the zoning board. You've all done a fantastic job of improving some really great projects for Quincy Center. But there's actually two that I just want to talk about very briefly, just the proximity that it is to 20 Whitney Road. Right here, 1170 Hancock Street. It's 100 yards away from 20 Whitney Road. You're going to have 66 apartment units going in there, geared towards commuters because of the proximity of the train station. Right next door of the old Citizens Bank Building, that's 1200 Hancock Street. You're going to have about 135 apartments going in there as well. So between 100 and 120 yards away, you have, you know, over 200 units going in there, geared towards commuters with a similar parking ratio that we're offering actually over on Whitney Road. You know, us on a much smaller scale is going after that same commuter transient type of tenant that just wants to be near, you know, a bustling Quincy Center and also being near a train station as well. I also want to add, I don't think I did earlier that these are going to be apartments. They're going to be one-bedroom to studios with renters. Right here, this is the existing site. When the applicant was taking on this project, you know, they really gave it a lot of thought, you know, because you were in actually a really unique spot when I talked about how unique the neighborhood is right here. You have an 8,600-square-foot lot that is right outside Quincy Center, right off of Hancock Street. But you also have a residential neighborhood that really... That's the first building that triggers that, you know, that residential neighborhood going down. So what he wanted to do was really take into account the proximity of the train station to Quincy Center, but also respect that you've got a residential neighborhood you know, you're right in the middle of it, right? So that's why his number-one goal is he wanted to preserve that building. He wanted to preserve the home, keep that structure intact, which I think he did a really good job of. I just want to stress right here, I think it's really important just off this existing site plan, is there is no parking plan here. This building never had a parking plan. And let's think back pre-COVID, back to what I hit on earlier. You had nine offices. You had staff for those offices. And you had clients coming in on a day-to-day basis. It was probably a parking nightmare. We have two offices currently right now occupied. And this is the best we have for parking here right now. We still have people double parked. We have very disorganized parking here. I know I visited the site on a number of occasions. I know my client did. It was tough to actually figure out where exactly to park. So we're actually... I'll get right to the parking plan, but I just want to hit on right here a couple of changes that we're going to be making to the building first. The porch off to the left-hand side, we're going to be removing that. We're going to be removing some of the back in the back as well. And there's a shed buried off to the right-hand side. We're going to be removing that as well. And here we go. That's... This is what I wanted to get at right here. Here you see right here, we have our second seven parking spots right down there, right off of the edge of the property by Sullivan Tire. First time in a long time there's actually dedicated parking on the site. As well as when we do our build-out right here in the back, you know, there's going to be 633 square feet of additional space in the home, you know, to build the apartments. But also underneath that, there's going to be two additional parking spots as well. So that gets us our nine to seven units with the nine parking spots as well. Also want to add in the back there, there'll be an area for trash. They'll be sealed off.
2015, any major blizzard or anything like that, they're going to, you know, they're going to professionally remove all of that off the site. The applicant, he's a seasoned, you know, owner, local guy, owns multiple units like this and properties. He knows how to get it done. He knows how to get the snow off of the, off the site. I also want to add also to the storage in the basement. That's where all the utilities are right now. That's where they're going to stay is also that's going to, that's storage as well. Just want to hit on right now, he's really committed. The applicant is really committed to really making this property look a lot greener. You know, he's proposing to put a couple shade trees in there. You know, plant some shrubs. The one I think that's going to be an absolute hit with the neighborhood is actually that shade tree that's going to be on the edge of the property right there, right on the edge of Sullivan Tire and right where our property line begins. Because if you go down there right now, it's kind of an underkept part of the, the property. Where, you know, this kind of tree that's, you know, looks like it may have seen better days. So we're going to replace that with a beautiful new shade tree, something that everybody in the neighborhood, I think can really be proud of. This is the existing floor plan right now that's going on inside the building. Like I mentioned earlier, you know, we have offices on the first floor, conference room, meeting room, offices on the second floor, storage in the basement. You know, we have a waiting room and an underutilized top floor as well, which we're going to utilize with two apartment units that we'll get to on the next slide, I believe. That's existing. And right here, this is our floor plan right now for what we're proposing. We're keeping storage in the basement, but also within that storage, we understand where we're located, you know, about 200 yards away from Quincy Center Train Station. We understand we're going to be attracting a lot of commuters. So we plan on putting some bike racks down under there for the tenants as well. Like I mentioned, the two car garage, first floor, unit one to the left, unit two up there. Upstairs, you have three units on the second floor, two units on the top floor. All these units, like I mentioned previously, they're going to be rentals. They're going to range between 500 square feet and 1,000 square feet. Gear, like I keep hammering it home, it's geared towards commuters, people that want to utilize living, you know, in, outside of the center of the city and want to be near a train station as well. And this here, this is the, this is hopefully, you know, if we're able to get this approved, this is the final product, as you can see right there on the front view, right there. It really fits into the character of the neighborhood with the roof line, the structure. And they really do a good, great job of actually cleaning up that front of the house. If you go down there, it looks a little overgrown at times. You know, there's going to be new greenage in there. It's just really going to be a, a great, a great building as you're coming off of Quincy Center and coming off of Hancock Street. This is the first building you see that gets you onto Whitney Road. Brian, is there anything that you want to jump into that?
Pretty much. Certainly talk about the architecture. Thanks, Pat.
Madam Chair, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. Like I mentioned, Patrick touched on most of the salient points of how this came about. If we could go to the, any of the... That's fine. So this is, is important to see that we're, we're squaring the building off. We're taking off fire escapes and the side entry, handling all the egress and ingress internally, creating seven apartments of one and two bedroom, one and two bedroom studios and providing parking for nine spaces for seven. If you go to that parking plan idea, maybe. So the theory here is that the garage spaces, which are in the gray area, which is part of the new construction, would pull in and back out in that rear left corner. The parking spaces along the property line, that's really intended to be a backout space there in front of the building, that 15 by 12 area, which we can explore that being a little bit bigger because some of those spaces might be challenged to back out and get. But the theory is that people can pull in and then they would be backing out into the backout space and then going onto the street. In terms of the architecture, if you want to go to the elevations, it's fairly straightforward. The building, the building itself is, to the ridgeline, it's 34 feet. After we create a manside roof, which is designed to free up some space on that top level, we're only going to be a foot taller. So it's not imposing. We think it's appropriate for the stately homes on Whitney and the neighboring Greenleaf Street, which is sort of where all the captains of industry lived in Quincy 100 years ago. And these homes are really nice and we wanted to respect the character of the neighborhood. So the new design really is, there's new siding, new windows. Developer is also here, J D Wells, if anybody has any questions for him. But if you want to move forward to design plan. So we're really just taking the roof off, creating the two units on the top floor and then the, the other five units below. It's fairly straightforward, new windows, new siding and obviously the roof, new landscaping. And that's, that's basically it.
Anybody has any questions? Sure. Any questions?
I have, I have a question. Please. So it's, it's, it's pretty, I love, I love the look of it. On the, if you go back to the aerial, Patrick, right?
Yep.
Right here, that's fine. You got the cars placed along, then to the left of that, to the, I think that's like the west side, the southwest side kind of. But what's going to delineate between the Sullivan property and your property? As opposed to, I, I, I don't like to see like a six foot fence. You've done such a nice job making the property look nice and you got that beautiful roof. And assuming that's going to be nice architectural shingles or some type of slate, something heavy. But like, maybe like a stone wall there that, that, that highlights granite or something, you know, being the granite city, as opposed to a six foot staircase that when it does snow out, you know, that the small plow is going to butcher into the wooden fence. It's going to go into the Sullivan property.
Right.
And I think on the front part here, where you have the turnaround?
Yep.
Which, which I think is a, a good idea because I, I'd like to see that probably widen up a little bit or maybe trimmed in the corner some.
Okay.
Only so that the cars that are coming deeper into the lot have a better opportunity to make that swing in, like you said, Brian, and then come out as opposed to, we don't want to see that cars back out.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
I understand.
But I, I, I think it's attractive. I like the looks of it. But I, I'd like to see some type of a, not a, a wooden fence, but something like it's got some strength to it. So if you get snow up against that, it's not going to blow out after the second storm into Sullivan's.
Yeah, member Sean, see that's something we'll definitely take up with the, the building.
Okay, thank you.
Number two?
Yeah, I just want to say, rather than tearing it down, and I like the idea that you, you added on to it and just knocking it down to the ground, but putting up a brick building. So it keeps some of the character in the neighborhood, so.
No, through the, through the meetings, remember Kelly, through the meetings with the counselor and talking to different people in the neighborhood, we realized how important that was. It's like we talked about, just trying to keep that character in the neighborhood as well and trying to also take into account the proximity to the center as well.
I think it's a nice built, nice looking building.
Any other questions?
I have one more question.
Oh, sure.
This, and you have to educate me a little bit here. So is there, is there any ratios as to like, like lower rate apartments? Do we, does that fall into this category though? Because there's only, you know what I'm saying?
No, I, I know exactly what you're saying. Is there affordable units?
Yeah.
Um, no, because we're under 10. We're doing, we're doing seven, yeah.
I appreciate you educating me on that.
No problem.
Just learning every day, you know?
You're doing a great job.
Trying.
And you're playing hard today too.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of questions. So the angled parking spaces, I thought we received some feedback about the feasibility of that. I just wanted to know if you could touch on that.
Yeah, Brian, do you want to jump up and handle that question on the pocket?
Yeah. We, we thought that it was more in keeping with, with the way that, if there is any organization for the parking now, it made the most sense to do it this way as opposed to trying to do parallel spaces and, and, and 90 degree space. It just seemed to make more sense. That certainly can be manipulated a little bit. As a matter of fact, Jim Distel here is, is here from Selberg. And he's massaged the plan a little bit to see if it's something that might work a little bit better. We do feel this works. The first space is certainly challenged to back out. I think other than that, I think it's, it works pretty well in this turnaround space in the rear and backout space for the garage. So I think it, I think it works. I think that maybe that first space is the one that's kind of challenged for sure.
Okay. And then the other question I had was just about exterior lighting, particularly along, I guess, the left side where all the cars will be parked. Is there anything proposed?
The, we submitted a photometric plan and really the only exterior lighting, we don't plan on doing any pole lighting by the parking. So there'll probably be a down, down light wall pack on the side of the building just to illuminate a general area of the parking and possibly a couple of ballers by the entryway. But we don't plan on doing any, any pole lighting or site lighting. So I think, I think the parking is close enough to the building where a little bit of illumination from the building itself will provide enough life for safety for folks that are coming in in the evening, so.
Okay.
And then there'll be, you know, the traditional decorative lighting in each entryway in the back by the garage, in the back entry behind the site, behind the building, so.
And then, I guess, use of, use of the garage space, how, how will that be determined? Will each tenant be permitted kind of one parking space? And there's going to be two open for guest parking? That's okay.
Correct.
One more question.
Yeah.
So you mentioned that you're going to, I didn't see where you were going to put your trash. Your trash bins are going to be?
We'll flap right there. Chair, sorry.
It's okay.
There'll probably be a small dumpster, Patrick?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be right in the back, right there, trash and clothes, right in the back. Right, uh, right at the edge of the, little build up we're going to do in the back there as well. We'll have some bins there, gated off.
I would anticipate a fenced area with a couple of bins in it. I think we probably need a dumpster. Small enough number of units.
They are very small.
Yeah, very small.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope? All right. So this is a public hearing, so we'll open it to public comment if anybody would like to speak. And while she makes her way up, we do have sign in sheets on the side. So you can say if you're for, against, sign in if you'd like to do that instead of speaking. Hello?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your presentation. My name is Hai Jing Liu and I'm one of the owners of the Johnson 18 condominium. We have collectively signed our petition letter and submitted to the planning board addressing our concerns regarding this renovation project. And we would like to ask some questions, pressing questions here. Our question, uh, first question concerns the renovation's compliance with zoning code. The proposed residential units are located in a business C zoning district, which permits multifamily residents, provided that the minimum lot size is 42,000 square feet. However, the given lot area of 8,639 square feet for this lot is significantly lower. So could you please clarify how this discrepancy is being addressed within the project's planning? Our second concern is the project's impact on our access to light and privacy. According to the plan, the total floor area will increase by 45%, which is quite substantial. This expansion will be realized by pushing the building higher and significantly closer to our property. Currently, most of the existing building construction is 34.7 feet from the rail property line. After the, uh, the renovation, it will be just 12.2 feet from that line. Uh, this 65% reduction in the rail yard will not only significantly affect our residents' access to sunlight, but also raises serious privers, privacy concerns. Despite these substantial changes, the developers has requested a waiver for the window and shadow study requirement. So based on this concern, we have two requests for the proponent to consider. First, we believe a window and shadow study is crucial to understand how the building's expansion will impact the neighboring properties. Second, we suggest the designer be more considerate, considerate for both future residents and existing neighbors in your design scope. According to your plan, there will be only about 15 feet between our window and the proposed windows. And you have designed two large sliding glass panels on the rear side of the building. What view will these buildings have, our homes? You have a spacious front yard. Why not push the building volume towards the, the streets more? Uh, so what is the rationale of, for adding the extra volume to the already narrow rail yard instead of the front? So in conclusion, our primary concerns are threefold. The first is the compliance with the zoning code. The second is requesting a thorough window and shadow study. And the third is to understand the design rationale for placing the additional volume in the rail yard instead of the front yard. We appreciate your attention to these matters and look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to continue, I'll continue to take public comment and address at the end. Anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
Kevin Norton, 21 with E Road. I live diagonally across from Doolin. And I've been here for 26 years. City of Quincy, city of presidents. It's more like the city of overdeveloped. Traffic, noise, the ordinance that they don't even comply to. My house is for sale, by the way, for the last two years because of this area. I appreciate Mr. Foley talking about the neighborhood, but the one thing he doesn't mention is the added noise that came in. The parking's horrendous. He mentions the building next door, Masonic Temple. 66 units, 250 seat restaurant, 30 parking spaces, 15 foot restaurant. Like who's the genius that came up with that plan? So now they say, well, we're going to come up with a parking plan before we can okay the restaurant. Well, what's the parking plan? Oh, we're going to use the historic building. We're going to use the bank. They're going to take the T. That's a load of crap. So they get 15 spaces and they have one building for the restaurant. But they're already building a restaurant. So what happens when they say the parking plan's not good? They're going to say you're not, you can't open a restaurant? I don't know what they're going to do with that, but anyway. He says it's a unique neighborhood. It used to be a unique neighborhood. Not anymore. When I first moved in there, no parking on the streets, quiet. Masonic temple maybe had 50 people at the most, maybe during a play or a dinner. Now it's 66 units with a 250 seat restaurant. Although I do like the name of the development, Wild Investments. I just hope it's not wild and crazy. I met Josh before. He did make an introduction to my, to me, myself, and I've known him from before, so. I don't really have a problem with the building. It's already there. It's pretty much just the rest of Quincy, overdeveloped. And like I said, no more city of presidents, city overdevelopment, traffic, detours, parks, street closures. It's ridiculous, so. 10 years, how many units have they built in Quincy in over 10 years? Anybody tell me? Maybe 25,000? In over those 10 years, has my taxes ever gone down once because of the increased revenue? Nope. Is it ever going to go down? Probably not. So what's the benefit of a taxpayer, a homeowner in Quincy with all this development? Anybody can answer that? Any benefits? Go home once, twice? I don't think so. Anyway, that's my thoughts. The building's already there. There's going to be parking issues. I've already had rats from the other development. Two years nightmare, just living there. Like I said, ordinance are meant to be adhered to. I'm watching a Celtics game the other night, 12 o'clock midnight, one in the morning. They're tearing up the streets. Who gives them the permission to do that? I go over there twice and talk to the guy. You're talking to the wrong guy. I don't know who you're talking to. Call the police. I call the police, what do they say? Call the mayor's office tomorrow morning. Yeah, thanks a lot. Anyway, if this goes forward, I want to make sure they stick to the ordinances like they're supposed to. No work before 7:00, like Fox Rock's doing over there, 6:30 every morning. My daughter's waking up. She can't get up, she's got to get ready for work, 6:30 in the morning. They work until after 5:00, that of course they're doing Saturdays. Every so often, they might sneak into the Sunday. They got generators running 24/7 during the winter. It's a complete nightmare. So residency in that neighborhood is now residence deep. So they should just downgrade it and maybe I'll tear my house down and, uh, build 20 units. Thanks.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this application?
Yeah, I just want to, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address some of the comments made by the first woman who came up. Actually, I hit on two of them. The first was regards to something like the different setback issues. We, we're going to have a zoning board hearing. She, she'll get an opportunity. That's where a lot of the variance is, you know, get themselves sorted out there. As for the design, you know, like I hit on in the presentation, you know, the applicant really did a good job of trying to keep that design to fit into what's everything else that's going on and everything else that's already in that neighborhood. And I think we all can agree that the design fits right into that neighborhood, the roof line and the structure of the building as well. So those are just two of the comments by the woman I just wanted to address.
All right, and I'll just take a moment to read into the record. There were two letters received on this application. The first is from John Mulcahy. I hope I'm pronouncing the name right. The adjacent intersection is already terribly congested with traffic and has virtually no parking availability on the street as it is. Additionally, this area is very difficult and hazardous for pedestrians to maneuver. The last thing that we need is additional housing and all of the increase in traffic that will bring. And the second letter was referenced by the, the woman who first spoke. It was Johnson 18 condominium residence. And she did hit on, I think, most of the points that are in here and that's on file with the planning department. So I know that we're waiting for additional comments back. We've obviously received comments tonight, so I think it's on tap for a continuance. Is there a date?
Yeah, Madam Chair, the, as a result of this being an existing house, you know, versus new construction, we feel that the August 7th planning board meeting would be a fair continuance for this project. August 7th, Wednesday, August 7th.
Is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to August 7th.
Second.
I see member Kelly, member Sean, see all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, so the next item is also a new public hearing, 29 to 31 Newcombe Street. Planning Board Case Number 2024-06. This public hearing shall be conducted to review the application of 2931 Newcombe Street LLC, 509 Beale Street, Quincy, Mass. 02170 for site plan review. Under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, Section 9.5.1 Site Plan Review and special permit under Section 5.1.17 Parking waiver. The applicant proposes the rehabilitation of an existing two-family residence and the addition of 14 units for a total of 16 residential units and surface parking for a total of 16 parking spaces. The proposal will also include professionally designed drainage controls and landscaping. The property contains 13,869 square feet of land and is located at 29 to 31 Newcombe Street. The subject property is located within a business C zoning district in Shona Assessor's map, 1131 Lot 18.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the board, my name is Gordon Glass. I'm an attorney with Johnson and Bornstein Land Use Law Firm located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover. I'm here to let, today with Carlos Scuta, representing 2931 Newcombe Street LLC for its proposed residential project at 2931 Newcombe Street. I'm going to start with a high-fly overview of the project before turning things over to Carlos, who will get a little bit more into the fine details. The property is currently improved by a non-conforming two-family residential structure. The proposal is to extend that structure in the rear with 14 additional residential units, bringing it into conformity with the use standards in the district, supplying 16 parking spaces for the 16 units. The entire project will be stylized to match the surrounding colonial aesthetic. We're here tonight excited about this project. We think this is the right area and the right time for this type of project. As the board is likely aware, Quincy is a gateway municipality. It's municipality that is midsize urban center where median household income is below the average in the state. This type of project is in line with the municipality's stated goals to support critically needed new housing units, housing units for key portions of the labor market and transit-oriented development. Also of note, similar to being a gateway municipality, Quincy is located in a federal opportunity zone. The units we are proposing here are single-room occupancy units. They're reasonably sized units for members of the workforce housing. We're proposing these 16 units roughly 1,500 feet away from Quincy Center MBTA Station. And we're also encouraging, you know, using that public transit with a supply of covered bicycle parking at the project. So we anticipate that the request for 16 parking spaces is reasonable and in line with the use they'll be made of the property. We think this is an environmentally conscious type of project where people are going to be relying on public transit, buses and rail to move and their bicycles rather than needing multiple vehicles per unit. So that's 16 units, that's one parking space per unit. So under Section 5.1.17 of the zoning bylaw, we're requesting that reduction to one parking space per unit where 1.5 is typically requested. And that requires a special permit from the planning board. We're also here this evening seeking a site plan review approval from the planning board. We're excited to talk about this project. We think it's an environmentally conscious project that matches the surrounding neighborhood and provides key housing units for critical members of the labor market. So for now, I'm going to turn things over to Carlos and I will be available afterwards for any questions the board might ask.
Uh, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, Carlos Scuta with Civil and Environmental Consultants, with his civil engineers on this project. The architect's not with us here today as well. So I'll walk through the whole project and show you the site plans as well as some renderings of the proposed building for context. Welcome any questions along the way here. So this is a perspective, so this is the perspective from directly in front of the, the building. Two sides in the future I'll show. It's across the street from the Y that was built a number of years ago, down the street from the school as well as in close proximity to that Quincy Center T Station. So this is a view a little further to the northeast along Newcombe Street, looking back towards the existing structure. Again, the building will be maintained, upgraded and added with additional units in the rear of the site. Facility that we're looking at here, immediately adjacent to the property, is an existing auto body facility. So for site context again, so here we're looking at the roughly 0.3 acre parcel just to the south of the high school and just off the screen. We also have the Quincy Center T Station. And just across the street, we also have the parking lot associated with the Y. So the intent is to save the existing structure as well as the architectural elements along Newcombe Street. There's a nice retaining wall that's located along the front of the building. So we're maintaining as much of that as we can, maintaining the building and improving in the rear of the property, so consistent with the architectural style of the neighborhood. So the image on the left is your existing condition plan. There's a paved parking access along the, called the easterly side. North is upside down on this, just for context, just because that's how we prepared the plans. So on the left of the building, which is the east side, we have access to a parking area in the rear as well as a garage. The site slopes from the rear of the property towards the front. It is also located within a flood zone. So the portion of the site is, but the building is not. So we will be in front of Conservation Commission as well for the work within the flood plan. So the intent is to remove the existing pavement, the existing shed in the back, and then take off a couple components of the building that were added on along the way and pull those back so we could attach the addition in the rear. This also shows the proposed water controls. There'll be perimeter water controls around the property as well as inlet protection in Newcombe Street to prevent the sort of sediment from leaving the site into the cities, stormwater management system. So this is a site plan view of the proposed addition as well as the site improvements. So you can see the darker hatch in the rear of the property attached to the existing structure. There's a total of 14 additional units being added to the two existing. being added to the two existing units in the existing building to remain. So there's six on the ground floor, and then it increases as you go up. I'll show some of the architectural floor plans as we go through. The intent is to provide parking for the residents along the right-hand side of the site, which is the westerly portion of the site. It's a 21-foot drive aisle with nine-by-18 parking spaces. So all the sizes are standard parking spaces. We're not asking for any compact, as well as a new ADA compliant parking space in the access along the edge there as well. We are proposing fencing along the westerly side, the page-right side, that's shared with the auto body shop as well as wrapping around the back. We're also going to be proposing a dense vegetated screen along the rear. I'll show on the landscape plan to the properties to the south, which is the rear of the property, to provide some visual buffering along that edge as well. And then along the east side, there's an existing fence that will be maintained, supplemented with additional landscaping. And then we also have two spaces off of a narrower access on the easterly side of the building, which are primarily intended to be visitor drop-off spaces that would be allocated there for the less frequent use as well as the opportunity for the dumpster that we have located in that area as well, which is sized to provide the service that you need for the residents of this size development. We also provide returning templates that show how the maneuvering would happen there. We understand it's tight. But for that reason, we added a cutout adjacent to the building as well as restricted parking there to allow for a return maneuver for the people to be able to exit out face-forward out onto Newcombe Street. That was a consideration with the traffic that's located there as well as the pedestrian activity. We are also proposing, as was noted earlier... Does this have a laser pointer on it? It doesn't work on the screen. All right. So along the entry walking into the site, we have a pedestrian access off of Newcombe Street as well as additional bike racks for bike parking, which will be under a covered canopy in order to provide more seasonal protection from the rain and the elements. We've also identified areas for snow storage around the edges of the site, the rear portion of the two-way parking area as well as along the edges of the rear portion of the narrower parking that we have on the east side of the building. Two new curb cuts being proposed, improving the frontage along Newcombe Street. So it's all new concrete sidewalk there as well as vertical granite curb. So continuing the improvements and upgrading that where it's existing pavement today. From a grading and stormwater management perspective, as mentioned earlier, the site does slope from the rear towards the front. So we're working with those natural grades, matching the topography at the edges, accepting all the runoff from the adjacent properties into the site from the rear as well as managing it, collecting it with catch basins, water quality units, sending it to a series of sub-surface stormwater chambers designed to provide the both a .8 and a 1-inch water quality volume and a flow rate treatment for the mass DEP as well as the city's stormwater requirements. And the amount of recharge being provided is roughly three times the recharge requirement under the mass DEP regulations. And that's being proposed in order to mitigate the total runoff. So the total volume leaving the site to Newcombe Street, which will be all now subsurface in the drainage system where some needs to overflow into the street across the sidewalk, matching the P grades. So there's no increase, it's the same flow rate and the same volume leaving the site. And it's better contained additional water quality treatment where there really is none today from the existing two-family structure. For utilities, fairly straightforward. The existing two-family is served by gas-electric telecommunications. The gas service would be maintained to the existing two-story structure. The new addition in the rear would be all electric. So there would be no new gas run to the new addition in the rear. There would be new fire suppression as well as domestic water added via connection from Newcombe Street as well as domestic sewer for the addition as well as the existing facility. So improving that infrastructure based on prior coordination with DPW, the introduction of a new manhole in the street as well to be able to provide better access. All the new electric and the telecommunications service to the addition would be provided with underground conduits. So all the overhead services that you find on some of these existing structures should be removed, all brought underground. And we'll be working with National Grid to coordinate any sort of electric upgrades that would be needed on pole-mounted transformers there. The landscaping plan, I was working with our landscape architect. As mentioned earlier, we have a dense evergreen landscape buffer along the rear of the property, intended to provide some additional visual buffering. There is some existing fencing there today that will be maintained, and a small containing wall that will be maintained, supplemented with the new landscaping in the rear of the property as well as along the foundation on the parking lot side, to provide some visual buffering and interest. And then really providing a focus along the frontage along Newcombe Street. So providing a mix of deciduous shrubs, trees, vegetation and grasses to really provide and improve the curb appeal there today. And we are also maintaining, there's an existing stone wall on Newcombe Street consistent with the aesthetic there for the remainder of the neighborhood. We will be maintaining as much of that as we can and reusing the existing materials on-site to be able to continue that aesthetic for the neighborhood. As mentioned earlier, this development you see is a little bit more than 1,500 feet from the Quincy Center T station, just to provide reference for the walking distance that would be available for a number of the residents there. There would also be a transportation demand management program incorporated into the project that would highlight for the residents elements that would encourage bus usage, ride-sharing, as well as secured bicycle and different modes of access to and from the site, encouraging those elements. I believe that's in a little more detail in some of the packages that was provided to the board. But that would be part of the application and part of the program here at the facility. All that information would be provided to the residents to encourage alternate modes of transit and a reduction in total trips to the site. And then recycling and waste management, talked about it earlier. The applicant ran some calculations based on traditional waste generation for facilities of this size and working with the private trash management company, which would be utilized to access the site. We sized the dumpster as well as the containment area to contain two cubic yard dumpster, which is the image on the right. So that would basically just be wheeled out, picked up by a truck, wheeled back into the enclosure, and then taken off-site with the private trash service. With construction management plan, ultimately working with the contractor. One is selected if the board were to approve the project. They put a more detailed plan together and consistent with the standard conditions that the city issues, there would be a detailed road and control and management plan as well as demolition and more detail in the construction sequence plan as well as more detail on timelines and the construction access to the facility and how that would be managed as well as the traditional construction duration timeline. So all that will be worked out based on feedback from the board. So here we have a few renderings that show the proposed addition in relation to the existing building to remain. So in the upper-left corner, we're looking at a view from the easterly side, which was page-left on Newcombe Street. You have the existing building in the front, the addition in the rear. So maintaining height consistent with the existing building that's there today and including some pitched roofs as well as some windows on the upper level to provide some visual appeal as well as playing off the existing structure and the architectural style of the neighborhood. In the upper-right corner, we have a view that shows the parking that's proposed along the east side of the building, which was page-right, as well as the main access to the 14-unit portion of the building, which is where the rendered person is walking out of the facility there. Not shown in the rendering would be additional sidewalks and access out to the street as well as the landscaping that's proposed. And then the bottom two are a slightly more elevated view from an aerial angle, just to show the size and the context of the building addition in relation to the existing building to remain. These are just some of the details of the proposed materials to be used for the building as well as some ideas of the finishes on the inside of the facility. I'm not going to pretend to be an architect to really get into the details on the various materials, but we certainly understand that that is a big part of what the applicant wants, a nice finished product from both the exterior as well as the inside of the facility. This is a depiction of the ground floor plan, which shows the existing building on the right-hand side, the two-and-a-half-story, two-unit building. There's a walkway in the front, which is on the page-right, as well as a walkway in the rear into the unit labeled Unit 1. We worked with the architect to refine the elevation so that we wouldn't need stairs to get in in front of the outer building. So all the access is at-grade, ADA-accessible in the front as well as in the rear. And what you have on the north side of the page would be the main entry into the facility where you have the lower foyer with a series of steps and grade changes to be able to access the main portion of the building. And then we have a number of units on the ground floor that I will show in a minute here, a little more context. This shows the architectural floor plan in relation to the overall site plan. Again, we talked about the access into the lower foyer and the four units on the ground floor as well as the two existing to remain in the building. The full architectural floor plans are part of the application package. So certainly, if you want to get into more detail, we can look at it then. And then a shadow study was also included, showing what the shadows look like in both the summer, fall, spring and winter. Largest shadows were typically going to find in the winter. So that's the one on the bottom right, which is the winter solstice. And all the shadows would be essentially focused on the properties to the east, to the north and to the east, which is the auto body. So the shadows from the facility and from this building addition wouldn't really impact any of the butters in the area. And that's the presentation we have for you. We certainly welcome any comments or any feedback that the board may have. We understand that the project would require peer review and additional review by the town and the third-party peer reviewers. So we certainly welcome your comments. Look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Yes, member Seanicee.
Oh, yeah. So I was looking at your notes quickly, and I was trying to read them.
It's small.
It said something about the parking spaces. They're not going to be assigned to the units. And that if the person wasn't taking a parking space, that you guys will be renting out the parking spaces separately. Is that what that said?
Uh, to be perfectly honest...
Un...
Unbundled.
Unbundled vehicle parking for the SRO. And I'm assuming SRO, single resident occupancy?
Yes.
Residents is right. So if I'm a single person, I'm in there, and I have to pay extra for parking, why wouldn't I just say, "Well, I think I'll just park on the street"?
So I think you're right. So the unbundled parking means that the parking spaces don't automatically come with each unit, right? So you have the option, if you don't have a car, to not buy a parking space, essentially, or not pay for a parking space. Couldn't park in the street because there's no parking in the street, and I think...
Well, people say there's no parking on the street, but yet they park on the street, so...
Yeah.
I mean, to say that, that's kind of like, you know, you can't park over there, but someone might drive.
Yeah, I would just say that the, you know, the city manages the parking, and if there's people that are parking in the street, certainly they're doing that at their own risk, and they're going to get towed, they're going to get tickets. So certainly, Newcombe Street is not a street that would be conducive to kind of somebody sliding their car off to the side of roads. It's pretty heavily traveled, and I think it's policed fairly well as well.
And you identify them as single... So these aren't, are these apartments? Or are these like a bedroom, a kitchen? It was tough for me to see it. A bedroom, a kitchen, these apartments?
To be honest, I'm not sure on the details on that. I don't know. Yeah, so unfortunately, the architect's not here today. I don't know the programming of the units or the inside of the building. I can't speak to that.
Because it kind of looks like a room and house on Schwank Down, maybe. But I don't have one in front of me today because I couldn't carry it, but...
Yeah, I think the inside finishes aren't shown on this plan.
Well, there was some pretty, there was some color pitches there. You had one of the slides, and I don't know if it showed like an actual galley kitchen or like a... Is there... Is there galley kitchens in there?
It looks like there is.
I'm curious about the pocket, but you tried to answer that, that's okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There are two questions. The power coming into the building, and you're going to be overhead on the ground?
Underground. All the power to the facility would be underground.
Are we coming into a transformer, or are we going directly right into the building?
So we looked at a transformer. At one point, we had space allocated for it. If needed, we could fit one. But based on preliminary communication with National Grid and with the city, we don't think we'll need a transformer for this one, a ground-mounted transformer. And it would be able to handle, be handled by a pole-mounted one for this size.
Okay. And then looking at the size of the parking lot, what do we do with the lighting up there? That looks like it's far away from the building.
Yep.
And a setback far from the street. So you're not going to get street lighting?
Yeah, so photo-metrics plan was something that the city asked for. And we are working with the team to develop one. On a site like this where the building is a majority of the site, a lot of times we add the lighting to the building, and you can project it out and still have it designed so that the cutoff at the property lines is down to zero. But that's something that we are developing, and we will provide...
I just don't see it. So it doesn't show on the building, it doesn't show poles, it doesn't show anything?
Right, we're not proposing pole-mounted lighting, similar to that previous project that was here. The site's not that big that we don't believe it warrants it. We'll prepare the photo-metrics analysis and provide that to the city for review.
One other question. Have you guys, with all the funding out there for EV charging stations, has any of the developers thought about the song EV charging stations out there? There's plenty of free money out there they're giving away.
Yeah, I know they've looked at solar, they've looked at other options. I think with the roof and the structure the way that it is, I don't know that the building itself lends itself to that as far as vehicle charging. Certainly bring that back to the development team and see if there's a need based on the type of housing that they think that might be something people want here.
The last thing is I'd say to all the developers, and if this plan gets approved, I hope that when you move forward that you choose a contractor that can hire men and women from the city of Quincy, not from somewhere else that developed this project.
Yep.
Noted. Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions? I don't have any questions at this time. So we'll open it up for public hearing. Is anyone here wishing to speak? Yes, sir. I'll also remind everybody, in case people weren't here earlier, there are sign-in sheets along the windows if you'd like to sign in, state whether you're for, against, neutral.
My name is Stephen Halochuk. I live at 11 Francis Avenue, which is about 100 feet from the lot that the proposal is dealing with. I really share Mr. Seanicee's concern about whether it's a literal SRO or there's going to be a kitchenette and what the... Because the units look like very small studios with the square footage. So I would highly recommend that that be determined. The person who testified for the developer really kind of begged the issue, and I think it's a very critical issue. I'm also concerned about the proximity of the rear of the building to the property line. There's other buildings in that area. Where I live is very close, and things are already pretty dense. And it would be better if there was more of an ample footage back there. I guess on the positive side, this is a much more modest, reasonable scale than previous proposals that the developer has brought before this board. So I think it's a movement in the right direction, but I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? No.
My name is Nancy Sedola of the 32 Newcombe Street, which contrary to what you said, the Y parking lot. The parking lot. I, my property is directly across from this property, not the YMCA. The YMCA has a little bit of overlap there, but to this property. But my property is directly across from this. I want to thank Steve for... I have, want to thank Steve for his courtesy last week of letting me discuss this and talk about it. And I don't really see any problems with this. It's a lot better than anything he's proposed before. I fully support Steve. My big concern is the parking, because Newcombe Street's a nightmare, and snow removal, because currently when snow is removed from that property, it ends up across the street. Not in my property, but blocking the sidewalk and all. But other than that, I support it. I think it's a lot better than anything and I don't think it's, it's not going to affect my property at all. So I support Steve. Thank you. Sir?
Madam Chair, ladies and all, that says, and board members. Um, my name is Steve Christo and I'm a lifelong resident of Quincy. Um, I graduated North Quincy High School, so I hope that has a positive effect to this. And my three children also graduated from North. Uh, back a few years ago, I ran for city council in Ward Five. I was unsuccessful both times, but I learned a lot. Uh, I met a lot of terrific people in Quincy. And one of the comments that always came up to me was the high cost of living, and it's everywhere. It's not only in Quincy and what we can do about it. And so um I spoke um on a prior project at, at this site before. And, you know, I really liked the idea of this project because I think what, what I used to campaign on is, you know, I'm not against development, but I'm, I'm getting, I'm for measured development with input and feedback from the neighborhoods. That's the way I sort of campaigned. And so with this project, based on, you know, what they, what, what's in the proposal, the fact that it's uh workforce units, which it um also is green, it's all electric. There's, you know, from what I understand, I'm not here to talk about any of the technical pieces of it, but from what I understand, uh, it's pedestrian-friendly. It also has um, you know, bike opportunities and it, and it's a step in the right direction for Quincy. I think it's a nice fit, particularly where it's located, it's close to the T. You know, the residents that will live there hopefully will be working in the city and have somewhere to live, somewhere where it's affordable that they can go ahead and continue, you know, and develop and grow within the city like the rest of us all have. So um with that, I support the proposal and um, yeah. Uh, if there's anything else yet for me, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on this application? Yes, sir.
My name is Stan Campbell. I live in a building on Spear Street. Um, that's a multifamily. And um the parking situation on Spear Street, Newcombe, that whole area is a nightmare. Not necessarily for or against this project, but I found it to be very unclear on what's really going there. The paperwork that I have here says that it's uh, let's see. It's designed for workforce housing for single-room occupancy, like tenancy. Sing, single-room occupancy, single-room occupancy. Isn't that a rooming house? That's what I thought a rooming house was. And if it's a rooming house, let's call it a rooming house. Um, I found that the presentation, it goes a little vague on that area. I'm also kind of curious on what's happening with the two-family. Two-family, is that also one-room units? And whether it's one-room units, whether it's ten-room units, you guys should not let this go ahead. They don't assign those parking spaces to the units. The, I mean, we're going to sell them. Newcombe's a nightmare. Yet Spears, I can't even get in Spear Street a lot of times in the morning without parking down the street. Walking because with the, with the high school going there, that street backs up the whole way. Right at the end of Newcombe, you're going to have that big building open up soon. Um, it's going to add a lot more parking, I mean, a lot more traffic and stuff. Anyways, I hope you folks, uh, if this goes ahead, get the details definitely more, a little bit more clear. But also, um, whatever number of parking spaces you give them, make them assigned to the units. Or you're just going to have people not parking on the street, but there's what their car is going to be. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And would anybody else like to speak on this application? Going once. Yeah, another opportunity.
Yeah, just wanted to respond to um a couple of the comments there. Um, again, we don't have the architect with us tonight. Um, I did get word from the principal that the proposal is not for a rooming house. Uh, there's a separate kitchen in each unit, separate bathroom, um, separate bedroom, and each unit is self-contained. So just wanted to address that. Thank you.
Um, and we did um also receive two letters, so I will read those. Um, the first is caption, I guess, petition support testimony. Dear Chairwoman Kimberly Bealan, Vice Chairman Larry Leuzo, and Planning Board Members, I have operated and continue to operate an auto repair business Hassan Auto located directly next to the proposed project at 21 Rare Newcombe Street. I've been servicing local residence vehicles for a few decades now. The proposed project I am in supportive as it will improve a blighted area. The new addition to the two-family, which was previously Hayes and Hayes Law Office, will mean improvement to the neighborhood and the residents of Quincy. Previously, prior to the current owner, the property was overgrown. In foreclosure, loitering occurring on a daily basis from father bills and the property not well-kept. The new owner has improved the property, maintains landscaping, and has brought new life into the immediate vicinity of the project. The workforce housing proposed will allow much-needed housing for working mechanics, bartenders, and Uber drivers. I like that there is covered bicycle parking, encouraging residents to use alternative forms of transportation. The landscaping design is appealing and the architectural design is aesthetically appropriate. The neighborhood is unique as it's made up of an auto facility, office, multifamily, and the YMCA across the street. This is a good addition and improvement to the area. That's done um from Hassan Auto. And the second is um here, Chairman of the Board, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Minton. I have lived in the neighborhood for four years and I support the proposed project on 29th 31 Newcombe Street. Although the auto facility should be removed, this project more than complements the, the neighborhood of multifamily housing, office, auto facility, and the new condominium building on the Graffin Spear. The colonial architectural, the single um room occupancy provides much-needed workforce housing close, um, should be to the public transportation. This is the type of growth that's, that supports local housing and the local economy. And that was submitted by Stephen Cook. And that is it. So, you know, we have some-
Well, it was mentioned by the proposal that this also has a conservation um application. There's some wetlands, there's some stormwater. I think uh the department's recommendation would be to the September 18th meeting and that should give ample time over the summer uh for the review to occur.
Okay, is there a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to September 18th, 2024?
Second.
Okay, so that's Member Kelly, Member Shaughnessy, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so this is continued. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda, new business preliminary filing presentation for a multi-use project located at 126th Granite Street. We can give it a couple minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Members of the board, Attorney David Mahoney. I also went to North Quincy High School, if that helps. Whatever it takes. Uh, I'm here representing the, the Grossman family. Uh, with me tonight is Avi Shoss, who's the Director of Development uh for the Grossman Companies. He'll be making the, the presentation and introducing the team uh and the Grossman family members that are here. Um, but what I wanted to point out to the board was every month, people on this board make votes. Sometimes you're, I'm not saying you're not paying attention, but you, you vote on things that have real meaning in the city. And this is one of those times when you voted a month ago on the Sixth Amendment to the URDP. What that did was broaden the map of the, of the URDP. And as Mr. Stevens says all the time, you're unlocking development. So as a result of that, that vote, expanding the URDP, you've brought forth a quality development that you'll see tonight. Uh, so on behalf of the Grossmans, thank you for that vote and I think it benefits the city as well. So without further ado, Avi Shoss will give the presentation.
Did you go to North too?
I did not go to North. Apologies. I wish. Uh, so backwards and forwards. All right, so thanks, Dave. Then thank you to the chair and the board for your time tonight to hear our pre-filing presentation for the project and the next chapter and the evolution of this site, which I assume most of you know. My name is Avi Shoss. I'm the Director of Development for the Grossman Companies here in Quincy. For the last few years, we've been planning for the repositioning and potential redevelopment of this legacy property and lining up our leases to that end. Um, after countless studies of varying use, mixes, and densities, we landed on the project that we'll share with you tonight. Uh, I've been accused of being long-winded, but I'm scripted tonight, so apologies for, for mostly reading. Um, and I'll try to keep it to a tight 10. Please don't time me uh to leave plenty of time for questions and comments from the board. Um, here we go. After the transformation of Quincy's downtown under this administration and the adoption of the latest amendment to the URDP by this board to include the property, the Grossman Companies and the Grossman Families are renewing their commitment to the city that was home to their beginning over 130 years ago. It's a long time. Before we get into the proposed project, I think it's prudent and fun to provide a brief history of the Grossman family and the site that are so intrinsically connected. This is going to sound a little bit cheesy, but the Grossman story is a Quincy story. Now the family is in its fifth generation of continuous operation in the city with co-presidents David and Jacob Grossman behind me here tonight and most likely timing me. Growing the family businesses to include First Boston Capital Partners, the largest private lender to home builders in the greater Boston market, and strengthening the core commercial real estate business and assets, including doubling down in prime locations like Quincy Center. The family business has evolved and so has the city. Here we go. In 1890, Louis Grossman immigrated to America and chose the Boston area and specifically Quincy to settle and begin his legacy. The opportunities in Quincy were vast and the family's salvage business grew exponentially into Grossman Lumber and other, and the other brands that comprised the country's first full-service builder resource center offering all building materials, deliveries, and financing. Hence the slogan, "Here Comes Grossman." The city of Quincy was growing and the downtown was thriving for much of that time as well. Not dissimilar from today, the residential neighborhoods were inviting, peaceful, and safe. And the bustling downtown was host to the density and vibrancy expected of a commercial center then and now. In the early 1900s, the family purchased multiple properties on Granite Street. Does the uh pointer not work?
Not on TV screen.
All right, well, pretend you can see where I'm pointing. They purchased multiple properties on Granite Street, which is where the salvage business transitioned into the core building supply business that ultimately expanded throughout the Northeast from its epicenter at 130 Granite Street, Quincy. So abutting the Old Colony Railroad, which you can see at the top of the, kind of middle top of the picture. Old Colony Railroad Company Line. And before the installation of Thomas E. Bergen and Walter J. Hannan Parkway's, the original Grossman Yard included all lands to the east of Granite Street, which is going up to the railway and north of School Street to President's Lane, which is today the Star Market Site, the TJ Maxx Site, and the Burger King Site. Similar to the conditions of the past that brought the family here over a century ago, the city's sorry, the city's revitalization and tactful urban planning under this administration and board offer the same opportunities for growth and progress and the Grossman connection to the city is stronger for it. The industry may have changed, but the downtown is again vibrant and the neighborhoods are still inviting and safe. And our renewed commitment to the city of our beginning is a testament to how far both the city and the family have come. That's it. That's all the, that's all the catch for now. The existing property, I assume everyone's familiar with the site, but for those in attendance who aren't, this is the site. The property is bordered by Granite Street to the west, Bergen Parkway to the east, and Walter J. Hannan Parkway to the south. It's comprised of two lots that total 5.19 acres with 65,106 square feet of gross commercial area and 214 parking spaces. The current retail is a mix of dry good purveyors like TJ Maxx and Dollar Tree and small service spaces like Auto Parts International and the Karate Studio relocated from Hancock, along with fast casual and fast food restaurant spaces. The retail runs along the eastern side of the site next to Bergen with the balance of the property utilized for parking and retail pads along the west and the north fronting Granite Street. Service and loading, which you can see hopefully at the intersection of Bergen and Hannan, um, is located at the southeast corner. Pedestrian access or vehi- vehicular and pedestrian access points uh occur along all three sides of the property, including two curb cuts on Hannan for retail and service access. Um, and three curb cuts on Granite for the retail and Burger King retail pad site access. Pedex, pedestrian access occurs via crosswalks at all three corners of the property and mid-blocks on Bergen, Hannan, Granite, totaling eight pedestrian entry points to the site. Which brings us to the proposed development. By the numbers, we are planning for 256 units of multifamily and 65,000 square feet of commercial space, including traditional retail, restaurants, office space, and a multi-tenant Al Parcel where Burger King currently stands. We'll have 350 covered and structured parking spaces within the residential building footprint and 147 surface spaces for commercial use in addition to some of the covered parking that will be dedicated to public commercial patrons. The proposed will bring dozens of jobs post-construction to the downtown with enhancements to retail, the addition of the residential building, and both fine and casual dining restaurant spaces. Given the near-equivalent commercial area, the entirety of the residential building assessment will likely be new tax base for the city of Quincy. This is a true mixed-use development. As part of our process, we have met with city departments, including fire, traffic, TPAL, DPW, along with others, with our owner's project manager, Steve Crucial, who I believe is remote tonight, if there is a remote connection. Maybe not. To review the proposed and respond to any questions and concerns they may have. I'm happy to report that the project was well-received by the city departments and that all the feedback that it's, that we were, that we were given has been addressed and incorporated into the project that you see here today. Our civil, civil engineer from Kelly Engineering is here to answer any site-related questions you may have after the presentation. As for the buildings, the project has let's move on, sorry. As for the buildings, the project has two distinct components, being a seven-story building that you'll see the base of and parking lot to running along Hannan on the south side of the site and a single-story retail building in addition along with Al Parcel on the north side of the site. The latter retail components are located where we currently have Dollar Tree and TJ Maxx as tenants with an addition to the north for new retail and restaurant space, rooftop decks, all the bells and whistles, uh, along with a multi-tenant drive-through building located near the current Burger King pad site. The residential mixed-use building has one level of below-grade parking below this level uh with two surface lots seen here and one above-grade parking level with five stories of residential on top of that podium. of residential on top of that podium. In addition to the smaller covered surface parking lots you see here, the ground level will have 8,300 square feet of office space at the corner of Hannan and Granite. Access ramps to secure residential parking, residential lobby, service and amenities, loading, and building service areas located at the southeast corner of the site. The Walter J. Hannan access will be a public connection under the residential building with a straight run to retail via generous interior sidewalks and pull-offs for residential uncovered parking. Deliveries, ride share, mail, and packages will all be managed within the site, behind the lobby area that you see in that parking and loading area, along with the loading and service zone for the rest of the building. The building itself is comprised of typical type-one podium construction with type-three residential construction above, and we have our architect Joel Bargman from BH+A here to answer any specific questions I can. Let's go to the next. On top of the podium, and in addition to the residential units, we'll have two outdoor deck spaces with interior amenity space providing the connection between the two north and south facing decks. We are proposing an additional outdoor space located at the center portion of the building at the upper roof level, which will have great northern views of the city of Quincy and Boston beyond. You can see that above the gray mass at the center of the building, the 2,500 square-foot rooftop deck. The building itself will be clad in a mix of brick, masonry, panelized fiber cement, and exterior wood, with balconies, signage, color variation, screening, and landscaping, providing excitement and breaking up the facades while continuing the urban fabric of the neighboring developments and setting up the design vocabulary for future developments on this side of Bergen. The residential units themselves will be a mix of studios, one bedrooms, one-bedroom pluses, and two bedrooms, with secure parking and trim and finish packages in keeping with the more desirable products in the market today. The project will comply with all affordable housing requirements, all applicable building and safety regulations, and construction phasing and operations will be coordinated with the city to be as efficient and least disruptive as possible. Our development's connection to the rest of downtown Quincy is paramount to its success. Building on the great municipal efforts of General McConville's Way and the General's Bridge, we aim to continue the pedestrian and bicycle facilities, landscape and hardscape features that you see there on our side of Bergen and around our property, with proposed enhancements to medians, crosswalks, and sidewalks, serving the property and the incorporation of a new green space at the intersection of Granite and Bergen, which you'll see on the far northern tip of the site. While connectivity is key, we are equally focused on improvements to traffic, and our traffic consultant Jeffrey Dirk from VAI Engineers has been working with the city's traffic and TPAL department to marry our project with the roadway improvements the city intends for the area, and Jeff is here to answer any questions you may have. Our traffic diligence and reporting will reflect this real-time collaboration. Based on preliminary drafts, there will be negligible impacts to peak traffic windows. Our full report and assessment will be part of our formal submission in August. I believe that the draft report was already provided to the, or to the planning department, okay. So it's, the draft would be available now if you were interested. Based, the existing ingress and egress points to the property for all modes of travel shall remain in their current locations, but with some exceptions, but with significant enhancements. Access from Hannan will remain with improvement, but will now circulate under the residential tower and by the residential parking access and covered commercial parking via a clearly signed, activated, and well-lighted sidewalk that runs by the residential lobby towards the center of the project and directly to the retail. Service and loading for the entire development will remain at the corner of Bergen and Hannan, but will be widened, extended, and enclosed to clean up the corner and improve walkability. The access point on Granite will remain in alignment with Whitewell Street in a wider and more direct connection, and consolidating the three existing curb cuts there into one lighted intersection that you see there that I believe that traffic's currently working on. Let's go. As for future commercial tenants, it's too early to say at this point, but we plan to improve the mix across the board, and we seek out best-in-market brands and vendors that will improve the shopping, entertainment, and culinary options for Quincy and offer great amenity to our future residential users. Given the history of the Grossman Companies and this property, we are also planning some level of historic retrospective, complete with photographs, timelines, and memorabilia that will be accessible to the public as a community art installation. I'm not 100% sure where Joel will, will put that within the building, first floor, but I think it's a great idea for marking the site and the history of the site with respect to the family. That's our project. Our team is here to answer any questions that the board might have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. A little more than 10 minutes, sorry.
Any questions?
I just, I have a few questions. Can you just, do you have a breakdown of the number of one bedrooms, two bedrooms, studios?
I can get that for you, I don't currently have that. I would say that it's a, it's a pretty even mix. Joel, do you have that information?
Yes. Well, it'd range in 30% ones and 30% twos and 30% studios. There's some smaller ones and studios.
So pretty, a pretty even mix.
I think it's gonna tie the area in nice, but the project that's going across the street.
Yes, we're excited.
It looks good. I just, I like the history lesson, and I look forward to seeing the full presentation. Just want to remind everyone, there is two high schools in this town. Probably graduate when they vote back. And last thing, and just, I know you're in the preliminary stages, but I'd like to say to all the developers, please consider the men and women of the city of Quincy with the history, with the history behind this lot, and all the residents that live in the city of Quincy that work in the trades. The men and women would love to work on a project of this magnitude.
We'll be excited to talk about it.
Those points were good to hear.
Any other questions?
Currently, great history, you know.
Thank you.
I shopped at that store when I was a kid, both from my mom.
I wish it were my history, believe me.
But because in the, in the current mix, you have some, some retail options that are afforded.
Yep.
And, you know, to the early stage, that's, that's your call, that if you think about that, moving forward, you know, it's, it's nice to have that in Quincy.
I agree.
To see the development, and we need it, but it's also nice to know that there's places like you currently have right now that serve a need, so, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
Anything for any of the consultants that we brought?
Yeah.
Anything difficult?
I do have a question, probably not for any of the consultants, just relative to the office space.
Yes.
I'm just curious about what kind of you're, you're thinking there, because it's along the streetscape that's obviously very accessible to pedestrians, you know, I understand the retail, I understand the restaurant use, I guess I just am questioning kind of the, the use of such a large space for office space, so I'm just wondering if you could shed?
All I will say is that the Grossman Company is currently occupied 8,000 square feet in Quincy.
Okay, all right, understood. Okay, thank you.
Read between the lines?
Yeah. Read between the lines situation.
Okay. Quincy, I get that. Braithwaite, I guess, nobody's talking.
Yeah.
Okay, that was the only question I had.
Good one. Chris, Larry?
Wait for the, yeah.
For the formal?
Yeah, yeah. Look forward to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks great.
We're, we're excited. I hope August 7th is.
Make, make sure you have UV charging, charging stations, you know, before you come back, you know what I'm saying?
EV charging's important.
You know, just, I, just, just giving out a little hints.
I agree. Certainly the infrastructure for, for everything.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item on our agenda, new business hazard mitigation plan, I will turn it over to you, Rob, but I'll free the announcement of the 30-day public comment period prior to submission to NEMA, FEMA for review.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the board. This past March, we invited our city's consultant, Tyon Vaughn, to appear before the board to provide an update to the city's updating of its five-year hazard mitigation plan. We have concluded the organization of a, of a draft, and we now need to enter into a 30-day public comment period. And since this board is an official public body of the city of Quincy, and we received that presentation a couple of months ago, we decided to go ahead and use this board and its mission as a vehicle to announce that the hazard mitigation plan, we are opening a 30-day public comment period. A copy of the plan can be viewed or accessed off of the city's main website. When you're on the main page, you want to hit the drop-down resident tab, and under those selections, you'll see the multi-year hazard mitigation plan. Once you select that, you'll see a bunch of information. What we didn't do is delete all the information from five years ago. We sort of dropped that down in the hierarchy, but it is still some good information contained to that plan. But what you'll see now is the new draft plan is up at the top of that page. We've also put instructions in there to submit written comments to the planning department located at 34 Cottington Street in Quincy, Massachusetts, 02169. Where folks can submit electronic comments to the city's generic, or our department's sort of public comment email address, which is planning@quincyema.gov. And I'll say that again, planning@quincyema.gov. So we'll take public comments on that plan. So that's pretty much the, you know, concludes my presentation. I encourage all of you to take a look at that plan, and if you have any comments, you can reach out or provide comments directly. The window would close in 30 days, and we would then organize the official submission to NEMA and FEMA for its final review of that plan. So thank you for that opportunity to make that announcement. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Two other, well, actually three other agenda items, but two A&amp;Rs for review and approval, those are there for endorsement. The first is 95, 100, 119, and 153 Parking Way, and then the second is 95 Upton Street, and those satisfy the requirements for A&R endorsement by this board. And then the final item is a request for extension of the two-year time limit on permit approval for 190 Washington Street, Planning Board Case Number 2021-08, and this was just a request that was received yesterday. Did you want me to?
Yes, well, I mean, if you wanted, that's me. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to the board, yes. Yesterday, we seen, we received a request from the proponent of 197 Washington Street that their planning board permit is set to expire. The board's permits, special permits, are good for two years. We base off in our decisions that it's two years from the start of the clerk stamp, which is the official close of this proceeding. That means we get all the final plans and those things. So that project got its final clerk stamp on July 28, 2022. Since we got the request yesterday, there would not be another planning board meeting, and, you know, our next one is August, so that expiration would have run out, and we put the board in a difficult position. This happened months before several years ago, when we needed a solicitor's office to step in and advise. So as soon as I got the request, I did reach directly out to the solicitor's office. He has done some review and provided some comments and thoughts and guidance to this board. He mentioned that so long as we read the request in today, that it is properly before this board prior to it running out of July 28. He said in order to encounter the open meeting law, the open meeting law requires any agenda items to be posted 48 hours in advance of this meeting, that we should go ahead and read this request as a receipt of his request. However, we will put this on the business item for next, for the August 7th meeting. We'll ask the proponent to attend and speak to the need for this request, and that request would be before the board. And just so you know, the extension requests are only at six-month increments, so this request would, if granted, would be for an additional six months. So. That would send that out to January 26. Somewhere about that, and he would need to appear back at six-month increments, and, you know, the board would take it, you know, each step of the way. And obviously, for, would have to see good reason, you know, for extending, you know, those continuances. With that, I could just simply read the statement, okay. Dear Mr. Stevens, this is from Peter Conaw, dated Tuesday, June 25 at 7:06 PM. Dear Mr. Stevens, I am formally requesting an extension of the special permit granted by the planning board of Quincy for 190 Washington Street. Unfortunately, we have encountered some difficulties in relocating our business international car parks within Quincy, as well as in obtaining sufficient construction financing for our project. Due to the current economic situation, we appreciate your patience and cooperation throughout this, this process. Sincerely, Peter Conaw. So, and I did provide the board a copy of the solicitor's comments, so with that, I will rest.
So more to come on that, I guess, to preview. And that concludes all of our business for tonight, so.
Move to the chair. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks.